All right. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the June 6th. We have the school committee meeting. Is there a motion to open the meeting? So move. Second is?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, here we go. Thanks for rescheduling. And I know we're going to meet twice this month, so double dose of school committee in June.
Westfield.
Yes. Adjustments to the agenda, we have a few. We're going to reorder some things, if that's okay. We'd like to have the FY '19 budget revisions first, then the update on the field. Is it fields or field trips?
Fields.
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 Got it. Then business manager reports, because I know you need to cut out of here for another obligation. And then we'll go back into student recognition to pick it up with the discussion items. And we also would like to add the Hopkins Academy's schedule and program offerings to the discussion items. This is a new topic. All right. So with that, we'll start then with fiscal year '19 budget revisions.
Okay, so the good news, what you have in your packet is a, one is a Word document summary of where we've been and where we are right now. What the school committee, in order to have a balanced budget on July 1...
Hi Tara.
Tara.
We're starting with the budget Tara. In order to have a balanced budget on July 1, we need to, the school committee really needs to revote total expenses and revenues. So in, on April 9th, the year of public hearing, you had voted a level service budget, recommended and voted a level service budget for total expenses of $8,542,398.65. And the revenue assumptions included a local contribution of $7,92,42.98, circuit breaker at $207,000, and then grant revenues and school choice. At town meeting on May 3rd, the select board recommended a local contribution of $7,39,167, which was $53,315.98 less than the local contribution that was requested. So based on that, we needed to adjust the expenses, although the select board was clear at town meeting and David Nixon stated, when somebody in the audience asked, why is there a discrepancy between what was recommended, in other words, the school committee's recommendation and what the select board is recommending, Mr. Nixon stated, the plan is after revenues have been certified, particularly, I believe, hotel occupancy and meals, has, after that has been certified, free cash is certified, the fall town meeting, that the school committee's request would be honored. But we're required to have a balanced budget on July 1, we can't say, and we also, so we just need a balanced budget. So Chris and I worked together to say, all right, how will we reduce expenses? How can we postpone, what could be postponed until after fall town meeting? Also, from the time of fall town meeting until now, there have been a number of changes to our operating expenses. So one thing that you notice that we're proposing you, proposing to you is an actual reduction in total expenses, as of what we know right now. The primary reduction is due to the fact that we have had changes in our financial obligations for special district out-of-district placement tuitions and transportation. So that's what has had the greatest impact on the, on the reductions. So we reduce the expenses to reflect what we know right now. We also were notified that a student who initially was going to go to Smith Vocational has decided not to go to Smith Vocational. So that tuition line also decreased. So we decreased our expenses. However, you'll notice that not only our revenues that we're applying to the budget, not only did local contribution decrease because of what was voted at fall town meeting, but you see, there's also a significant reduction in the amount of circuit breaker that's being applied. So it's not just an even expense reduction. When an out-of-district tuition is eliminated, circuit breaker goes away also. So, and that's not entirely what constitutes some of those fluctuations, there are other things that we know in terms of certainties that we have about other special education expenses or contracted services. But one of the reasons that it isn't just as simple as, oh, we have reduction in tuition, the budget goes down, that's the end of the story, that circuit breaker revenue will always also have a corresponding decrease. So we have less circuit breaker to apply, but where we found ourselves is rather than with a $53,000 deficit, it was roughly a $21,000 deficit. So in order to bring the budget to balance, we are recommending postponing some of these expenses essentially that you see here. And I've listed them, some of our purchases under subscriptions and supplies, some of our elementary and secondary teaching services, some of our training for our tiered interventions and supports, and some of the purchasing of regular testing materials. Now, what, for the select board to understand, we have a select board representative in the audience, is that tonight you'll vote a budget to bring it into balance. So you agree school choice being applied hasn't changed, you agree with the expenses as recommended, as presented, and you agree with how we're applying revenues. After fall town meeting, we will bring forward another final FY '19 budget if it changes again. It could be that at fall town meeting, something else changes, something changes with tuitions, and we're saying, yes, as a matter of fact, we do require the entire reinstatement of $53,000. It could be less. It could be we don't need anything. It could be we don't need anything. So when we get to fall town meeting, or when we're developing the warrant, the school committee and the select board are developing the warrant for fall town meeting, we just won't know until we're closer.
Yeah, I think it's like $75,000 or something.
$53,000.
Whether $53 in the budget.
Yeah. $53.
Okay.
$53,315.98. We'll probably call it 316 when we get there. We'd just like to go right to the penny, if we would like.
So Annie, can you speak to just kind of the criticality of these services that we're saying we're going to postpone until the fall, like where we may or may not see the path?
So because most of the things that we've listed here with subscriptions, supplies, materials, and training are things that don't all have to be paid for in the first two months of school. The secondary, elementary and secondary teaching services, now this may be one, which is one of the reasons that you don't have every single line in front of you again, because it will most likely change. And you'll understand why this may change when we talk about the schedule at Hopkins. We initially thought that we could probably make a reduction, and, and we would be fine with that. As we're looking at the schedule, that's probably not the case, which means that to bring it into balance, which again, your focus is saying, okay, I understand, these are the expenses that you believe are known right now, these are the revenues that we have, to bring it into balance, we would probably cut again from materials and supplies, things that we don't buy 100% in September. You don't purchase all of that in September.
Fuel oil.
Fuel oil, that would be another place where, and that would be an example, when we, when the school committee was working with the select board to prepare for fall town meeting, to say, this really was a postponement. It's not like we're going to stop using fuel oil in March. We're going to need this. So if we had to restore that .29 FTE, then we would take it from something that we can amortize over the course of the entire year until after fall town meeting. And some of the things that's pre, that I wanted to bring to your attention also, on the revisions and the long-term implications for revenue. So over time, and certainly, Humaera and Heather have been here a little while, on school committee for a little while, that over time, the school committee has applied an increasing amount of school choice funds to the operating budget. So we continue to apply more and more school choice funds, and so that means we must increase school choice revenue. That's another thing we'll be talking about tonight, is opening up slots in grades 5 and 6. Circuit breaker, so I pointed out to you, there's a corresponding decrease in circuit breaker revenue, special education cost decrease, and the preschool grant, 391, we know that that grant will go away next year, you've been talking about that, so that'll be a $30,000 cut to preschool, that will have to be considered and picked up elsewhere in the budget. And we, our nurse leader, Renee Dennanfeld, has said that Department of Public Health is indicating that the nursing and health grant may have stipulations going forward, and those stipulations would, would make it so we could not apply that grant to salaries. That would be a big issue, because we apply, as you see, 51665 to salaries. So if those two things were to occur in FY '20, we're starting $80,000 in the hole before Step Slams falls.
Yeah, so I think that, that helps to explain why we would prefer to postpone spending items than dip into school choice even further. That's, but we're holding to the school choice amount, contribution that we indicated we would support for this budget, we could support for this budget despite the difference between the local contribution and what was, what was determined in May.
And I did include some information on school choice revenue projections in your packet, so applying the 695, we'll walk you through that. So our, it's after the line items, it's after the budget, the function subtotal summary. So our balance at the start of this fiscal year was $721,132 and change. Our projected revenue for fiscal year '18, this is just all school choice in, not including any special ed increment, just school choice in. This is a fairly accurate figure, this comes directly from the spreadsheets from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So it shows me every single student who's choosing in in FY '18, their grade, the town they come from, and the revenue that we receive. The special education increment, the same thing, it just shows up right on those spreadsheets. That 159 includes increment in transportation. How much we're applying in FY '18 in the budget that you approved, so then our balance. Now you can see the revenues, and I just want to remind you that this is really, this is just me playing Zelda, gazing into a crystal ball, because that's what I get paid to do here. So educated. And it's based on taking that very same spreadsheet, filtering out all the seniors, and calling that my new total. So what it doesn't take into consideration is anybody choosing in. I also don't know who else, you know, is leading that, or things like that. So I don't take that into, I don't have any new students coming in. The special education increment, just again, took out all the seniors, that's all it did. So we could have new school choice students, for whom we also receive special education increment. So we could receive more than this. We could receive less, some existing school choice students could leave. And then how much you would apply in, in the budget, and that was the amount that we discussed on April 9th. And then where your balance would be if all those things held true at the end of fiscal year '19. That 6% is roughly the percentage of total operating budget, and that I thought was helpful, that you know that the select board also has parameters on the floors that they have for certain, for free cash, or I forget the other one, but, so this would be about 6%, and how much is projected, and what it represents as a policy surplus. So there's your projected grant revenue, and then your policy surplus. And you also have estimates for circuit breaker, and you can see, circuit breaker carryover is, is gotten quite a bit lower. So we're still, even though we reduced the amount of circuit breaker we're applying in fiscal year '19, we're not hoarding a bunch of circuit breaker money that we could otherwise be applying to the budget. Circuit breaker is, you're allowed to carry it over because it's, it's designed to be a sort of, a bit of a reserve if you were to encounter an unanticipated expense. Student moves in from out of state on September 1, will absorb an expense immediately. So this amount that we're projecting will carry over at the start of FY '19 of $67,693, roughly, $67,94. That is one placement, a tuition at a public school, a collaborative program potentially. That's, that's half of an expensive program, or two-thirds of an expensive program, and not even transportation. So it isn't a tremendous amount to carry over. Tuitions, tuitions can easily run $115,000 for a single tuition, and transportation can easily run $27,000 for a class. So a single student going to a more expensive placement, an individual student, that could be $150,000.
So we, this is an action item for us.
Yep.
Questions on the revised fiscal year '19 budget?
So I have one question that I think you may have actually just answered with that circuit breaker surplus. Seeing that, that one of the major adjustments is the lower amount of circuit breaker coming in because of the reduction in special ed education, what do we have as a buffer? Is it just that circuit breaker?
Circuit breaker and school choice.
Okay. So should, should somebody in the middle of your need, like that's where those ones would come from?
Absolutely. Circuit breaker and school choice. That's also one of the reasons to keep the school choice for several things. This is quite common, right? This is an adjustment that is, you know, every year, we don't quite know what the free cash situation is going to be, and we make this long patience in the fall when we know exactly. The town, I think the town routinely, there are other things that the town, it's, then anyone can jump in and correct me, but it's, my experience has also been that typically their contracts, whether those are union contracts, or they are non-union employee personnel agreements, but they typically don't settle those until late summer, early fall, so that all of those adjustments to the budget are made at fall town meeting. Most of the fall town meetings I've been to, that's typically a warrant article there. So the town does do that. We do our best to try to nail down our budget, but I'm glad you asked the question, Humaera. So, you know, for the town side of things, Mr. Stanley, you were voted into this spring, right? So we usually, for good reason, the select board is asking for numbers for the budget starting in December, with some preliminary numbers in early January, and our, our tendency to say, well, this is our best guess, does not come from a place of just being difficult. This is, as you can see, things still change right now, that, that information. Chris and I thought we were having a very different conversation about balancing the budget on Monday, and then Ms. Bell called us, and that completely changed that conversation. That was, she was quite good news pad on Monday morning. So that's how quickly things change. So do we want to vote now, or do we want to wait until the end?
Probably rather do it now. Chip away at the action items. If that's okay, unless there's other questions or considerations.
And then that reduction of the .29 FTE at Hopkins, you said that that may or may not happen based on the scheduling.
So if that, if that had to be restored, then that's where I said the, we would still have the reduction, the expenses.
You'd pull the money from somewhere else.
We'd just pull it from somewhere else.
This would result in diminished services for the students.
Correct.
So do you want a vote to reduce the budget by 23?
No, you would just vote the bottom line. So you're voting the expense line, right? That's all we need.
Page is 85.
Yeah.
The, the, yeah.
To the bottom of page 1. So 836349972.
Yes, this one right here.
So motion to, to approve a fiscal year '19 budget of $8,363,499.72.
Give her a second. All right.
Aye.
Great, thank you for the detailed explanation. And we get to revisit it in the fall.
Yeah.
We just never stop talking budget. Okay, the next was fields. Yes, Chris?
Okay.
Although Paul isn't here, that's okay, I still think it's good for the whole committee.
We have some progress on the fields. Let's see, a while back, about a month ago, they mentioned that we needed to do some wetland studies. They asked for approval on that, so we approved it immediately. They came around, they flagged the wetland areas on May 7th. Finalized the survey with wetland flags, I don't know if anyone saw there, those little orange flags out in the outfield. Flood elevation information, they needed some work on the topographical maps that were done, apparently they weren't as complete as they were blanked on, so they, they took care of that as well. So now they need to get the plans to the level they can submit to the conservation commission, and they said, unfortunately, the conservation commission requires that the plans are submitted a full month in advance of the hearing, they only meet the second Tuesday of the month, which means that it was not in time for the June meeting, so that would be, the next meeting would be the July 10th meeting. They said, once we're done with conservation commission, they will be done with the plans inspected for bid. And this is if we could get the notice of intent approved that same night, we would go out to bid immediately. It would take a month for the bidding process, we'd be awarding the project second week of August, construction to start two weeks after that, due to paperwork, contracts finalized. Construction would take approximately three to four months, so they'll be looking at November seeding and a reseed in the spring. And then they said, another option is to go informally to the next conservation committee hearing on June 12th, and propose going out to bid at the same time we submit. That would ensure, assure the board that we would follow all flood and wetland regulations, and have the conditions added as an addenda during bidding or amendment to the contract. Now, of course, we don't know how the conservation commission feels about that either, you know, a bunch of showing up to the meeting or anything, it might be possible we can reach out to them. But the bottom line, excuse me, with all of this, is that until we have sufficient funding for the fields, this is, it's all work that needs to be done, but it's kind of putting the cart ahead of the horse, because we don't have the funds right now to get this done. So I know we were waiting on marketing materials from Chick Media, we received those, was it last week?
No, I think it was.
Okay. And they look good, very good. So now what our job is really, is to kind of make up that roughly $150,000 shortfall we have with the project. We can't go out to bid until we have the money, because we'll end up going out to bid again, and that just doesn't work very well. So that's really what we need to do, we need to try to address that shortfall quickly, and then we can move forward with an attempt and an aggressive schedule to try to get this done. As I mentioned to, yeah, I'm not really a fan of seeding in November, because it just seems that, then we'd have to rerake the fields and seed them again in the spring anyway, so that's not really an option either. I'm not the grass expert really either, so people that know more than I do, it might work, but I was really not that excited about that idea. We were kind of looking to be starting the work in July, and having it going forward from there. So that's where we are right now. The part we're at is the need for funds. If we can get the funds, then we can go to conservation commission and really get an attempt to streamline the whole bidding process and get this going.
So, I mean, given the, the normal submission deadline is June 26th for a July 10th hearing, and the accelerated one is June 12th for the June 26th hearing, I mean, I'm not hearing where by June 12th, which is like next week.
It's next Tuesday.
Yeah, that we would have a commitment of $150,000 unless someone's got a line around, you know?
Yeah.
So, but I get, I mean, it seems like that would also be, you know, the beneficial way to go for grass seeding, because we would get it done, started more quickly.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if we could do that, we would certainly be able to go out to bid sooner, assuming of course that we would be able to get the money. That's, that's the other wrench in the works for us.
So what are the plans that, I mean, we've got marketing materials, and I know Paul's not here, it's not, you know, completely fair to ask this without him here, but as far as a marketing plan to obtain that kind of commitment of funding?
So we are looking to meet with one particular partner, I'm not trying to be, I am trying to intend to make that, because we are looking to meet with one particular partner, and seeing the extent to which they can support, how much support they can give to phase one. What would be really helpful is if we could identify a partner who would say, we'll get you a full lot closer, so we'll feel confident going out to bid, and we're raising a much smaller amount. And so that would be our, that, our goal is to have that meeting set up in very short order. I don't know what their response would be. That's our strategy right now, our best strategy. Otherwise, it's come summer, Eric and some other staff who are willing to assist, and I try to sort out going out and doing fundraising. The challenge is we'll probably have to look to, no matter what, creating some sort of friends of, just as they have for their fundraising efforts.
Right.
I'm completely committed to this project, but as I'm sure you understand, and as we talked about it, so we even said, that's not what you hired me to do, is my number one priority, and it just, it, on any given day, it isn't, depending on what's happening. So right now, in the immediate, is I have my conversation with a partner that we think may be willing to help us get to a good place in phase one, and then I would suggest that really trying to galvanize community support to go before CPA, particularly residents, people who pay that tax, to galvanize community support to say, we would like to see these funds used for this purpose, rather than creating any sort of, just committing as much as possible.
And maybe I misunderstood though, but is it part of their CPA's funding, coupled with the fact that there needs to be a fundraising effort on our end too?
That, so, yeah, they, well, they could, they could, there's nothing, there's, that's their personal decision, which is fine, they have every right to make that decision, but there's nothing that legally prohibits them from entirely funding.
Okay. So if you've got this meeting scheduled in short order, if you wanted to go the accelerated route, could you go to the June 12th committee hearing, propose going out to bid June 26th, kind of contingent upon getting some commitments? And if we don't get that by June 26th, we can't go out to bid, and then we're going to that July 10th hearing? I don't know, I'm trying to think of.
Yeah. Do we have to go to a second hearing if we don't go out to bid the first month? Can't we use whatever we decided in the first meeting, and whenever we do go out to bid?
Can't we use, are you talking about conservation committee?
Yes. So it doesn't hurt to do things on a parallel path and on a faster track, so we have a decision in hand and information from them. If it doesn't happen one month and it happens the next, it's no harm.
Correct.
It would just be better to do all things on a parallel path.
Absolutely, yes.
To get the project done.
Yes.
So it, to me, it is a no-brainer, even if we miss the window on the open meeting, to be there, have a presence, have a dialogue, see how much we can accomplish, and get whatever information we need. If we have to go back, we have to go back.
Sure.
We'll be even stronger in our, in what we need, because we went the first one round.
Perfect accelerated timeline in order to keep the parallel path.
Momentum is important here.
Yeah, I agree.
Momentum is important, and summertime can slow down or heat up depending on how we keep up the pace.
Yep.
Okay. I will let them know.
Thank you. Okay, business manager reports.
Okay, we have a bunch of them.
Thank you.
First up, we have the expense report. I've done a lot of transfers that either zeroed out or brought back into positive, a lot of the negative accounts that we have. So it's, it's looking pretty good. It's, if you look at the last page really, it just tells you where we stand at this point, well, let me put it this way, at the point in time when I ran this report, which was the end of May, we had $700,000 left. which was the end of May, we had $700,000 left in the budget. Right now, because I ran it this afternoon, we have $466,000. Ran a pretty big payroll because it had all of the stipends and a number of the coaches' salaries in there as well, so it was a good-sized payroll. $466,000, we have a final payroll that's the big payroll coming up, which will be $700,000. So it doesn't take a genius to do the math and see that we have less money than what we have owed. But we still have, of course, a substantial amount of School Choice money. I also have about $60,000 of circuit breaker money that I can transfer to, and so that will bring us back right in line. It'll be tight, but you know, again, that's kind of what it's supposed to be really.
Do you get that vote from us at this meeting or the following meeting?
Um, it would probably be at the following, yeah, yeah. I mean, actually, because we have another one in June, that'll work better, will be much more in line. And what I'd probably have to ask for is just the maximum amount that was in the budget, you know, the remaining amount of that. That way, we find ourselves with a little extra money, I won't use it all, you know, and that's, it's always better to get that up to a certain amount. That way, I don't have to use it all, you know, versus a vote of saying, you have to use $400,000 or whatever it may be. So, yeah, that's probably the best one. Any questions on the expenses?
I was just looking to see what we had committed to for this year.
Five, I think.
It's.
Five eighty-five, I think.
Five ninety-three, maybe, maybe the other was something around.
Here it is. It is five ninety-three, four fifteen, point two four. School Choice projections.
Five ninety-three, four fifteen, twenty-four. And our balance in there now is at the end of April, Sheldon has eight hundred something, eight thirty-three.
She's looking at the revolving account.
Yeah, revolving account.
Yes, it is, yep.
And do you recall what we had said we needed to leave in there? I mean, you were saying, so when we come back at the end of this month and vote to shift funds from School Choice to balances, it would just be good to know, okay, what are we left with?
And that's on that, the School Choice projections that Diane had done?
We'll make sure.
Okay.
That's to the penny as possible.
I'm focusing on next year.
I mean, the only thing is that it may, it would possibly be a little bit higher if we don't have to use all the funds.
We don't use the entire.
Projected balance at the end of June is six eighty-one, eight forty.
Which is this minus this plus this.
Yep, okay. Okay.
So the next report we have is the grant report. You can see, there's not a lot of funds remaining in the grant. And we're down even lower now. The health grant, Renee and I met again today, and that's scheduled basically by the next payroll, that'll be completely used up. The circuit breaker, as you can see, we have 125 left, so that leaves me about $58,000 to spend in that account as well. I'm going to just keep it in here again until the very end, probably until July, quite honestly, where I will. You know, you wait until June 30th, then you have those few straggler bills coming in in the first couple of weeks of July, you pay all those, then we see where we stand. And again, if I don't have to use it all, I won't. So it, it actually, it's a little better to wait rather than to just commit to it now and then, oops, I used too much, well, let's transfer some back, and it really just starts to get messy actually, so. Then we have the revolving accounts report.
Lunch, my favorite.
I know, I wish I had better news, but.
What'd you do with that?
Had that one shining month of positive. And yes, it's down, as you can see. You know, the rest of the accounts is pretty good. Preschool revolving, it's $78,000. We have close to $7,000 coming from Amherst for a couple of students that attended that. So we actually received a good portion of that money, but it was made out to the, I think it was made out to the Hopkins athletic revolving account. So I had to send it back to them, and they're sending a replacement. So we can add about $7,000 to that, you know, so it'll bring it back up pretty nicely. The School Choice, as you can see, that'll, you know, that's going to grow again. You'll see it, it's so close to May 31st that a lot of these either haven't been received yet or weren't posted on the town side, so your next meeting, you'll see all the main numbers for these. Lunch, just, I had a meeting with Diane Zach today just to go over where she stands with collecting negative account balances, and she is owed right now in negative balances $4,855.60, which is darn close to the negative account that she has, they're within $4. So typically, and I asked her this because I thought that was the case, typically she does pretty well at the end of the school year in collecting all these. I don't remember it being this high in the past, I mean, it's really pretty high at this point. So she said she reaches out on a pretty regular basis, you know, weekly to bi-weekly, doesn't get a lot of response basically. It just seems to be that when the school year ends, and I know she did get a response from one parent saying, just let me know at the end of the school year what we owe, and I'll bring it back up to zero, so. The hope is that we get a lot more of those because, as I said to her today, that amount pretty much makes or breaks whether or not she ends up in the positive or the negative for the year. She needs to work on her subject line in her email. It doesn't sound like school lunch money you owe me, it could be something like fun cat video. I would pass that along to her.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So the monies that any family or student would have outstanding, they would include anything that a student didn't have cash for and would come in and borrow, but would also include any negative balances on the my lunch bucks, my school bucks?
Right, whatever they, online.
And why, why does that even go negative? Why is it that when that is zero, that isn't just, you know, it's not, it's not going in the negative, it has to be refunded in order to purchase?
Right, I mean, and it might not, I don't really know actually, I've never logged in.
It shows a negative balance.
So it does show a negative balance.
So when you go to re-up your kid's account, it pulls that out first?
If you borrowed.
If you borrowed, yeah.
Yeah.
And it also will send you an email.
I should, yeah, I should know this, so if I'm incorrect, and folks will call the policy correct, but I think that is, so students don't go into debt for, let's call them non-essential stuff. They don't, they can't borrow for ice cream, they can't, before a lunch. The school committee policy has been, which actually is in line with now what the legislature wants, we don't lunch shame anybody. Whether you're on free and, is you don't have money for lunch, and you like the lunch, you get a lunch. And the school committee has never proposed doing an alternate, give me back that tray and I'll hand you peanut butter sandwich. And so on a regular lunch, that, that's why it can go into the negative. If that, I think that answers your question of why.
I wonder though, if the, to your point, can that my school bucks just go to zero? Help us in any way, can they help with some messaging? Because I know if you have the app on your phone, it will literally push you a notification saying, Bobby's balance is low. Can you tell I've seen this one?
Oh, really?
Yeah. Too much ice cream or whatever.
How much do you owe us right now?
So $3.
Whether it are default settings that allow for more easier refunding, that it's like a button right in your mobile app that says, yes, please, you know, negate my balance or.
Or even messaging. I mean, they may not be able to update the app, but maybe they could help so it's not just Diane, I don't know.
Messaging, but that's not a bad idea. That's, you know, that if somebody wanted to, that they could link it to something that says pay. It is a little bit of a pain in the butt to, you get, you do get a notification that you are low, I've gotten those notifications, and I go in and I pay, but going in and then refunding and then checking out, that's, it could be simpler.
Yeah, if there was a direct link right in the email, you know, if you'd like to make a payment, click here, it's right to your account.
Well, and they, they charge a service charge.
They do.
Every time you fund your kid's account. So I usually put, you know, one big chunk right at the beginning of the year, and I'm like, because I don't want to do this every month and pay a buck.
Not everyone is stressed with the cash flow to.
No, I get it. But I also know somebody may not want to go in and be up there now when, yeah, they're going to pay a $2 service charge.
And especially if the reason that you're waiting to pay it is because you don't have the luxury of having cash available any time, then there's less folks who need a service charge every time. So I suppose we can do some research with my school bucks. If there's something about. Capital plan, which Chris is going to talk about, but I'm just going to remind you the timeline. So our capital plans, which David already knows, I told him, I believe I copied all of you, that we're meeting on the 25th, we would turn in a final capital plan on the 26th. The deadline for the town right now is the 22nd. They've gone from a five-year to a 10-year, but they know that ours will come in on the 26th. So this, Chris can take it away with what's changed, what he's recommending.
Okay, so year one, I kind of left us this year just to have that air conditioning project still showing up here. We actually, I sent the contracts over to David, I already got them signed from the vendor, so I just sent them to David because we needed town council and town accountant signatures on them, and then we're good to go, so.
Great job, by the way.
Thank you, big God for that. And for, there were actually this afternoon, a couple of changes already to the version you have here. The item number four, new cafeteria serving lines with drains, there have been some additions to that line. When I met with Diane, she took me into her walk-in cooler, which is rusting through the floor, there's also some in the ceiling. So it's, it's, it's heading in the wrong direction, shall we say. So we've added that and a couple of other items that she had issues with in the kitchen as well. The good side to it is that we took out the tech upgrades, Mike has already taken care of those, so, so the $32,000 just comes right out. The net result is we actually have a little bit lower amount for FY19 than what you're looking at right now, which is certainly a good thing. The girls locker room remodel in year three, again, that's something that, I did up the amount on that. I think that, let's see, estimate from 2009, there is no way an estimate we got in 2009 is going to be anywhere near the same in 2019. So I bumped that up to 500,000 from the 400 it was. Again, you know, once we move closer to that, we can certainly get pricing, but I just thought it was prudent to, to bump that price up a little bit. Then, you know, then we have some tech upgrades as well. The following year, and I didn't know if you wanted this in there or not, but we have the athletic fields Phase 2. Again, this is kind of an estimate, obviously, we're not going out to bid, we don't even have plans and specs for Phase 2 yet, but just to have something in there. We also have a bus replacement in that year and like a small amount for some tech upgrades again. The year after that, FY22, we're looking at resurfacing the Hopkins parking lot. I spoke with Jeff, he said, yeah, it'll last that long, so we have that item in there. And again, some tech upgrades. Year six, all we have right now are the tech upgrades that, again, these have been in the plan for quite some time. In year six, these are more Chromebooks, more of a Chromebook replacement program actually, because at that point in time, a lot of the Chromebooks that he's purchased are going on, you know, anywhere from five to 10 years old. It's pretty much the end of their life, so he's looking to kind of create a system of just changing them over. Then the following year, and this, this is where things really start to get a little bit, I guess, less clear, because, you know, you're looking at years seven to 10, these items could change, you know, I mean, something could happen in two years from now, and we say, oh, we need to fix this now. Everything gets shifted out, you know, whatever it may be. But we have unit replacements for Hopkins. Those are the heating units in the classroom. Again, Jeff said that, you know, these things are, these are the original units. They're just, you know, we kind of Band-Aid and chewing gum them together every year, for lack of a better term, it's not really that bad, but. Probably sounds literally actual. But it's, it's, it's hard to find parts for them at this point, I mean, you know, it's, it's not an easy thing, so he's looking at replacing those. The following year, we have the always popular grease traps that, I mean, again, that could continue to be pushed out. The year after that, we have another school bus replacement. And the final year, Jeff has told me that we would probably need to replace the roof at the elementary. So, you know, again, that's one of those items, we have it out in year 10. It could go to year 12, we could start to develop some major leaks, and it could move to year seven, so you know, I mean, again, these things, it's kind of a moving target. And again, you know, pricing for year two is a challenge to nail down, never mind year 10, we just don't know really what, what a new roof is going to cost 10 years from now, but, you know, we have it in there. It's, it's something for the town to go by anyway, just as a heads up that, you know, this is on the radar.
When was that roof replaced last?
The elementary school roof, I believe, is the original one from 98, somewhere around 96 maybe? So, yeah, at that point in time, of course, it will be 2027, so it's roughly 30 years old at that point in time. Is that 92.5 in health and security, is that about that, that walk-in you were talking about, or is that that walk-in? No, health and security, and I hesitate quite honestly to get into too much information about the security upgrades, but the health portion is just a continuation of replacing the drinking fountains of the school. And so that's the health aspect. The security items are items that we've discussed.
In executive session.
And I could go into greater detail with you at that point in time.
But they are several of the items that we discussed in the executive session a couple months ago.
I'm glad to see that they're placed where they're placed as well.
Yes, year one.
And so that would be fall town meeting, we'd be looking to loosen.
And I actually told Jeff that, you know, in anticipation, fingers crossed, of approval, tell the vendor that we want him to come in immediately after it's approved to get that going, so we will.
As far as the school buses go, they're okay to wait that long too?
I believe so at this point in time, yeah, I mean, we, you know, we replaced one a couple of years ago, and the other one, I forgot the year that it was bought, but, you know, I think we can go out to, you know, to 2022 or that. And then the one we bought a couple of years ago would be replaced in FY26. Again, it's kind of just a, you know, rotation of inventory more or less, and this would, you know, both for a safety degree and also a financial where, you know, same as a car, we get to the point of where you need a repair every other month, and it's almost better to just buy another one. Be the same with the buses.
Aside from the update that Chris has mentioned, is there anything that you would like added or deleted prior to June 25th? This would be what we would be submitting to the town. So he's indicated he'll be updating the cafeteria, item four, but are there anything, is there anything that sticks out for you in terms of, is there anything missing?
I think the question, sorry.
No, no, no.
I know we keep talking about our retreat this summer, and, you know, one of the topics that I know we've batted around is just the structure of this building and the longevity of the structure of this building. And whether or not it's worth seriously considering, looking at as part of a 10-year capital plan, what is the future of this particular structure? And in relation to our census data and size and needs and just age of this building. So that's not something that we can necessarily put on here by the June deadline. I think we have to discuss it, and I don't think it's anything that any one of us may personally be tackling as a committee by the, kind of, this rolls around, but I think it's worth at least having a discussion about what information would we need in order to think about, okay, longevity structurally sound, is this meeting the educational needs of our children, or are we Band-Aiding things that we shouldn't face?
Yeah, I mean, the nice thing about the capital plan, of course, is that it's, it's. Yeah, I mean, the nice thing about the capital plan, of course, is that it's, it's not like the town says, "Well, you gave us a 10-year plan, we'll see you in 2028."
Yeah, right.
You know, I mean, we, we update this every year, so something that is not on here this year can certainly be placed in any one of the years next year, so.
Right. Well, I think it's great that they're thinking 10 years instead of five years because that's helpful. But I think that at some point, we're going to have to get that conversation on the table and figure out what, what that really looks like. To be honest, that conversation, once it takes place, the decisions that come out of that conversation would influence some of the.
That is true, yeah.
Priorities on here that would greatly change, in my opinion, to the things that are earlier on. If that were to come to fruition a lot sooner than we think.
Yeah, me too.
So I, I feel comfortable with the, with the plan as it is right now, based on the R, just because we haven't started any further discussion. I mean, I know it's kind of been brought up in passing, but no real serious discussions or evaluation or observation or looking at the school that's done at this point. So I don't, I, I feel it feels good, at least for now.
And the good news about what you see, at least in FY19, is it puts the town on net as that we know that the security, health, tech, and healthless in cafeteria, we will need that. And everything else, every year, they'll ask for that data.
Right, it's best available data.
Right. But I really like the idea of revisiting what, what kind of space, what kind of building do we want, what the learning outcomes that we need? What reflects 21st century learning that we want for our town in terms of schools? When was this building built? Last update as well before any of our.
In the 50s, I believe.
Wonderful building, served its purpose, probably still, there's many years left in it. New building, substantial upgrades to existing building, and whatever that conversation is, it's worth having 50 years in. Doing the 50-year check.
I mean, I think a lot of it is just to see if it's structurally sound, you know, I mean, are we going to end up having issues where, you know, it sinks or, you know, or something like that, which you'd think by now would have, I guess, if it was going to.
Okay, but yeah, this is good, sounds like good for June. Do we need to vote on this one? Or are we okay?
We'll take it to your next meeting.
Yeah, we'll take it back to you.
Okay, got it. After we make those adjustments and then we'll go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for being here.
Okay, back to, oh, sorry, are there any more business managers?
I, I apologize and I thank you for moving my hands forward. I have a policy meeting in wear now, so.
Bravo. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I wish I could go with you.
I'd like that, too.
I didn't mean it because I almost leave here. A little sarcastic about what he's off to.
Back to the agenda, student recognition of our John Earle. It was a very nice letter.
Yes, Ginsburg. And, yeah, so I am going to read it for the viewing audience. Dear Brian, this is a letter from Beth Ginsburg, I believe the chairperson of the PTO, or not president of the Hadley PTO, and wrote it to Mr. Beck, the high school principal. Dear Brian, I'm writing this letter to recognize Hopkins Academy senior John Earle. Last week, Hadley PTO held a family night for the book fair. In an effort to increase attendance, we decided to offer a reading by a town hero. What better way to promote reading than for children to see an older, successful, well-rounded student reading? With late notice and hectic schedules, we feared we would not be able to secure a student. John obliged our request, he arrived on time and was beyond accommodating. Family night is set up in the cafe at Hadley Elementary. It is a large room and there were groups set up throughout. John picked a good day, good night to read to the kids. He started out by introducing himself, letting the children know how he was a senior at Hopkins Academy. He told the children he remembers coming to the book fair during his time at HES and is a day he anticipated and enjoyed. As he read, he asked questions and added commentary around the reading on his own without being asked. Moments after he began, there was not a single person who hadn't stopped to listen. Every adult in the room had a smile on their face. You cannot help but be drawn to this charismatic young man. We need more young leaders like John Earle. John brought an intangible presence to family night. He connected and reached out to every child gathered around him. We thank him for his kindness in providing his unpaid time to the Hadley Parent Teacher Organization. The next time you see John Earle, please recognize him for his outstanding effort. So thank you, John Earle.
Very nice.
It was great.
How was like the book fair?
And we had another, it was in the weekly email, they re, hopefully, we reinstituted this tradition of kind of the senior high five, so all of our seniors with their caps and gowns and went to the elementary school. And the students were wonderful. They lined up in hallways, they made them cards, they stood out there, they all gave high fives. Except for in the pre-KK in one wing, the class advisors, the adults. And some of the adults were fearful that a high five from some of our taller, stronger kids would knock them right over. So they all got to wave and it was wonderful.
It was great.
Saw some great videos and photos. Oh, it was, it was awesome. The kids were very excited to see it, so it was nice, yeah.
It's good. Okay, service field trip update.
Service field trip update. So the update that you had, you voted, you approved a 2019 service field trip to Guatemala. I want to be crystal clear that I was the one who said to Senora, "Hey," because I went to Guatemala last year, "That place is great." And she'd gone there in college, and so I said, "You should go." And that's why I gave her all that information about a language school down there. And then, as we always do with all of our trips, we went on the United States State Department travel advisory. And I was, so you can see, they have four levels, one, two, three, and four. And one, exercise normal precautions, and I give you examples of countries that currently have a level one, Canada, Panama, Belize, Oman. A level two, exercise increased caution, so Europe, Bahamas, Mexico, I have Belize twice, Belize is one, sorry. And India. Reconsider, Russia and Turkey are on that right now. And then do not travel. Examples are Iran, Yemen, Afghanistan right now. These levels change. They're given to an entire country, so it could be that a region is actually dictating the security level for an entire country. And that, that is often the case of Central American countries, right? That it's really what's happening in cities, because they'll say that what the advisory is for, crime, for example. But the crime is typically concentrated in capitals or in larger cities and you don't have the same experience outside of that. And so Senora and I met and looked at the travel advisories for all Central American countries and Mexico, because the goal is this trip, the students want to do service and they want to try to contain cost, which is why they're focused on Central America, Mexico, maybe Northern Latin America, South America, but that too gets challenging. Venezuela, other places which will be level four right now. So you can see Guatemala is a level three. This is due to crime. And again, it's primarily the cities and the capital, although where she was going, where I'd recommended, and it, it wouldn't be on its own of level three, which is Antigua. But now they just had a volcano erupt outside of Antigua. So that's, that's another bit of a hiccup on the Guatemala side of things. So there's level two, so level, Belize is a level two, excuse me. El Salvador, level three, Honduras, level three, Nicaragua is right now a level three. Senora had started pivoting back toward Nicaragua where she went with the children two years ago. And Nicaragua right now really is a level three because of the civil unrest. And the person with whom she's been communicating about the trip has assured her repeatedly, "I feel confident that this will all be over very soon." Costa Rica's a one, Panama's a one, and I do think I have, and Mexico is a two. Yeah, and Mexico is a two.
I mean, I feel confident that it will be over too, but we don't know.
Yeah.
And better safe than sorry in light of what we know is going on there.
So where we're at right now is keeping some options open. I just wanted the school committee to know that, and what Senora, God bless you, what Senora is communicating to families who are very eager, their children want to participate in this service trip, is we, we will identify a place that, that meets all of our needs to do service and a place that is safe, where they can practice Spanish language skills as well. But we haven't landed yet because of this, what's going on right now in Nicaragua. People, I, I still believe she can continue with fundraising wherever they go. People should be fundraising. But we'll continually update you. And I would say that you approve all field trips, all overnight field trips, all foreign travel. We would never recommend students going to a level four country. If a country had a travel advisory of level three or the travel advisory changed, I would ask for additional explicit approval from the school committee if something changed. So there's nothing for you to vote tonight, just know we're looking at that. But I also wanted you to know, we do send, children do go, they go to Europe, it's level two. And so we, level one and two, you approve these trips anyways, but if something changed and a country was designated to level three, we'd bring you the information as to why and have a discussion. And if you said that's, you know, we don't, we don't think that that's a wise idea. We're, she's prepared to, she's also looking in, in potentially Costa Rica as an option. And so you've approved Nicaragua at, right now. They're not going, if Nicaragua is level three, we would, we would come back to you and say, "We want explicit approval again, knowing this is the level that it is and this is why." So, and if something changed, you would absolutely, so no matter what. If Nicaragua is re-designated level two, this, this won't, I'll update you, but you won't need to vote. So I'll continually inform you that if it's, safety designation goes back to what it was when we originally approved the trip, then you wouldn't, I don't think you'd be pre-approved. Nothing is substantially changed.
And at what point do you decide, you know, this level isn't changing? We should look at our backup plan and then switch and you come back to us for that.
So when you talked about parallel track, I think she's, she's developing a backup plan kind of right now. She, now that they've been to Nicaragua, none of my great Guatemala ideas off the table, especially the, the volcano. That's pretty much off the table. She's, the idea of going back to Nicaragua is appealing because of course they've done it. So that would be very appealing. So, but she is simultaneously working on an alternative. And I wanted families to know, too, that we do do this on all of this important.
Thank you.
And the students who go overseas, we encourage them, we encourage families at those meetings to use the Smart Traveler Enrollment Program. It's free, we tell the parents, enroll in step, so that they, they get alerts constantly if they want them while their student is overseas. And of course, our teachers do blogs and other things to communicate with parents.
We do budget.
Yeah.
School choice.
So school choice, you have a chart in there, there's one correction you probably picked up on it. Grade two apps received is one, grade three apps received is zero. So obviously, it wouldn't make sense if we confirmed acceptance for an app we didn't get. So there was a mistake there. But this evening, what we are, what I would like to propose is we had originally said no to opening up grade five. Next year's grade five, which is the three classroom, the three teacher group, where we added a teacher. And no to opening up grade six, which is the current grade five that has two classes. So next year, grade six would have two classrooms and grade, did I do that right?
Grade five would have.
Grade five classrooms. So originally, when we voted seats, grade five and six were not open. I have met with the Hadley Education Association leadership. I have met with the faculty, with faculty representatives at Hadley Elementary School. I have met with faculty representatives at Hopkins Academy. We talked a great deal about the reality of the budget. I gave them, probably, I will send it all to all of you. It's all data that you've seen, but I will send you the workbook that I sent to all of the faculty. It shows them enrollment, foundation and actual overtime, birth cohort data, the things you look at from NASDAQ, so the picture isn't getting better for us in terms of birth cohorts and projections, expenses overtime, and the fact that the town now is, is quite generous in terms of the percentage above required net school spending. That Hadley now is a very high percentage above required net school spending. And, and that it's as, as, you know, although we may feel, or, or some of the faculty for good reason, and they expressed concerns that, that there are, there are students who have needs that are, would be much better, much better met perhaps, keeping the environment very small. They also understood and were clear that they certainly don't want to see any unnecessary reductions in terms of teaching force or support. And they understand that it is hard to, it's hard to explain to the town when every year the request for local contribution increases. It's, it's hard to justify not opening, not taking a rep. So we have interest in those grades and that's the part that would be difficult. I feel, speaking personally, and I said all this to the faculty, and at the end of all the meetings, they were, they, they know that I'm saying to you, my recommendation is open up school choice. The several members of the faculty were on the same page with that, that that's, that's what they think should happen. And I was very clear that I felt that it, it's challenging to explain, particularly on town meeting floor, why we don't see any sort of corresponding staffing or expenditure reductions when enrollment declines.
So there's three classrooms in the, in what's going to be the next grade five.
Correct.
One request, which is 47 kids, which is 15.6 children per classroom. If you divide it in three, that's a small class still by accepting that one student in. And it would be 20 for the grade six. These are still really small classes compared to a lot of other districts. And I actually really very much so agree with Ann's opinion that in a school that is struggling potentially down the road with budget and we're sitting here talking about how can we advertise our school? How can we get more kids in? And then we don't, we're not going to open up. I don't, I don't think that we cannot open up.
Well, the decision to not open up was very clearly around when we had just two classes. And the numbers of those two classes were, they were kind of out of control with a very especially difficult group of students. And so maybe it made a lot of sense to like put a halt to any kind of growth at that age group and to add a classroom. Now to reevaluate and to ask the question, well, do we have things under control? And are, do we feel as though we, we can add what is just one or two?
Student that makes economic sense to do, but again, if it's under control.
And I, I have heard that things have been really well at that.
How many students are in the classes right now?
So it's essentially your 46 divided by three, is that what you're asking?
Is what the current is right now.
Correct, correct, and so, yeah. So now that we have the situation much more balanced in terms of what that grade should look like, it does make sense to open up those seats, especially if it's displaced. And you may open up, you may say, we'll open up eight slots. So what we'll have to do is, once you vote, then we need to advertise by law again. We need to advertise for five days. We'll put the advertising, it'll probably go in on June 8th, we'll advertise for that week.
So we can't put, we can put a cap on it, though?
Yeah, so you're going to say right now, so you, because if you say one, so if you say one in fifth grade, I was going to say you could say up to one additional per class. You could say we're going to open up three seats, because we didn't advertise before. So when you advertise, perhaps more people are going to apply once we advertise. And we're still getting, we're getting school choice inquiries, as I said today, I got an email. I know I missed a deadline, but do you have any room at Hopkins? So once it goes in the paper again, there's a very good chance that there'll be more. If there's more than the number of seats that you've approved, we have to do a lot.
Speaking of advertising, have we advertised Hopkins and Hadley Elementary School?
No, Hopkins was done entirely, those ads were done entirely by faculty. I don't know what has worked. I'm going to assume everything is working, if you noticed. Do you see the projected changes in numbers that Hopkins is projected right now? And I told you I had four inquiries for school choice this week that aren't reflected here, to have an increase of 24. to have an increase of 24. Hadley Elementary is looking at a decrease of 18 next year. But, and that, even with our competition from choice and vocational, they'll, they'll be up 24 right now. And that's not all of our school choice confirmed at Hopkins. So I'd like to think that all of the efforts the faculty have put out are, are helping.
Just each, sorry, I'm just curious, does each grade have two classrooms? Every grade that we have in elementary?
In the elementary school? So it depends on what column you're looking at. But if you're, right now, right now, your fourth grade has three and your sixth grade has three.
Right.
But beyond that, the rest of them have two.
Correct.
Fourth and sixth have three classrooms?
Right now. And so when you're looking in the left-hand column and you go to fifth.
Fourth and sixth currently all the way to the right shows we have 46 people and 49 people. So there's three classrooms for those. Sixth will go into Hopkins, so they're blue. Fourth will go into fifth grade. So we, that would be, fifth grade and elementary is the only one next year that would have three classes.
So there is the commitment to have three classrooms in fifth grade?
Yeah. They will remain as three all the way through.
I would be in favor of opening up three seats, one for each class. And that still keeps you at 16 to 17 kids per class. Now that it's, you know, it's had a little bit more stability time, you've got three classes established. It just, to me, just because one person applied to only advertise one seat is, that seems limiting.
You could give more.
Yes, you could open it up to three.
And do, is, not being, not, not really knowing like what the staffing level is like in that fifth grade, are those additional positions that have to be filled? Or do we already have the teachers?
So you already have the teachers. You already have, what you would be voting if you had, if you said, all right, we're going to advertise three slots in grade five, and I'd say three slots in grade six. So that's all. And we could do a reminder advertising and, and seats continue to be open. You, you didn't, because you previously voted zero and zero in five and six, I cannot open slots without you voting. One to say yes, we're allowing you to participate in those grades and these are how many seats. So we'll run an ad, whatever you all agree to tonight for five and six, plus a reminder tagline, "School choice seats available in other grades." We've already advertised those. So, in fifth grade, that, that was before we, this, no, two. Yeah, this is the first year they've been split into a class. They have three teachers, there used to be two. So we've already staffed for, they have three teachers. If students have needs that require in-classroom support, or we say B-grid service delivery, we have those services in classrooms.
Just another quick question, that's, it's adding three seats to the current fourth, next year's fifth.
Uh huh.
And how many seats to the current fifth, next year's sixth?
Well, you haven't discussed that. You have three applications, so whatever you ultimately will decide, are we opening and how many seats are we advertising?
And that's currently at two classes.
Two classes, so 38, 19 per class. If you opened up two seats, you know, it would be 20. Yeah, and that would be the largest class with, like individual class, right? Based on the numbers here in elementary school? Everything else is less than 20?
Yes, you have had classes higher than, I mean, you don't have like 25. You have had 20, 21s and 22s and, I feel like I could probably pull my grade level enrollment over the years, I feel like when I first got, where you had, I mean, one of the things that we've been suffering with is this enrollment.
Right. And we want to keep people staying here and going into Hopkins.
And you said the teachers were supportive of this. Yeah, I mean, they certainly, their original concerns still stand, but collectively, I want to, I want to fairly represent this. Of course, some people got back to me and said, my feeling is you have to open, open up school choice. Creating, creating these choke points ha, ha, has these other consequences. It has consequences for Hopkins, it has long-term consequences, that you simply have to do it. And there are some people who live in town and work in the district who say, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. Like if revenue is available to support services and expenses that increase every single year, we have an obligation to seek out that revenue. So there are many people who very, feel very strongly about opening up choice. There are some people who have reservations, reservations about opening up choice for a particular grade. But, and I do believe this is an accurate representation, that they also understand that if it's a question of, as they know, we had to go through this budget cutting. Now, budget cutting would have been a much different story if we didn't have news on Monday that some things had changed, right? And they were saying, well, before we start seeing these cuts, we'd rather, if that's, if that's a choice, we'd certainly rather increase revenue. So I think there are some people who would say, this is certainly not optimal, but we don't see anything that is optimal, right? Optimal is our enrollment just keeps coming in and so easy.
So I, I would propose that grade five, we go with three seats, which is one per class. And grade six, I would go with four seats, which is two per class. What do you guys think?
I agree with, I, I agree with you on grade six. The four open seats for grade six, you've got three interested thus far. So opening up another one sounds reasonable. I, I think at least three seats in either class. And I do understand that that has been a challenging class, but you reduced that number by eight children by putting it into three classrooms. So I think at least one additional per class would be who of us. I mean, I get it, and I understand there's challenges, but I mean, that, that number's reduced by eight children per classroom by breaking it from two classrooms to three classrooms. That's a great reduction. So I definitely don't, I definitely see the benefit going from a financial standpoint of at least having one child in a classroom would be reasonable. And I wonder if, just to play devil's advocate, if you opened up more than that one, you might not get that many applicants to. Maybe there's one classroom that could support two children more than one.
Right, that's true.
I'm just going to play devil's advocate on the entire thing. Looking at the numbers of enrolled students throughout the, throughout the old years, that 46 is not, not even close to the lowest one. So there have definitely been classes with fewer, with, with, with fewer enrolled. And also knowing that in the fifth grade, they, starting that more like middle school mentality of switching and going between, and going between classes and trying out different things, and hearing from teachers and stuff about how difficult, about how challenging some of those, how challenging some of those cohorts have been. I'm just curious if we really want to install, install something that would, that could greatly affect these, greatly affect these students, especially in transitional years where they could, like, start having a miserable experience or feel like, have these emplots for them, or their parents start feeling have these emplots for them, when we do want to keep them through so they're not going to alternative schools for high school.
It's ridiculous, right? The things you can't determine.
It could do beautifully so, or it could be a disaster. It could be disaster if you don't add any more students at all.
Right.
Right? Or it, it could have no impact having more students.
I think we need to be, I think we just need to be careful. We finally have that grade under control. I think adding two per class, knowing what I know, as a parent of a child that's in that grade, I, I would feel comfortable adding one. But I can see two easily spiraling things out of control. I think we could revisit that in another year and add more, but one per class feels like the right next step.
For grade five, for term grade five.
Yeah. If we added three choice seats now, which would be the one per, and then next year, looking to, I mean, our goal is to have more open seats in six, right? Because we want to get people in at six, want to stay here and come to Hopkins. I, I, because we, I know we lose people in between that, but I could see where that, that might be a prudent way of at least, yes, we're going to open it up, but cautiously.
And, and six is different because you've got 38, that's two, that, I mean, we, we all know that there are problem grades, there, there are. But six does not seem like one of them next year.
No, I guess, I mean, when this fourth grade class gets to sixth grade two years from now and it still has three classes, we may say, you know, like now is the time to open up even more.
Right, we should revisit that next year, for sure. And it is much more than, so I will be clear with the community that it isn't 100. And I know the faculty and staff, and I've had several discussions and meetings about this. It isn't solely about the bottom line. And we have a responsibility, I think, to be able to explain to the town that gives us, in FY19, the town will spend on its public schools $1.3 million in excess of its required net school spending. And its required NSS is low because foundation enrollment is so low. So the gap to get to expenses, foundation enrollment goes down, chapter 70 goes down, the required NSS goes down, the town, and I'm very grateful for this, steps in and fills the gap. And so I, I think there's also that argument of saying, what is the most logical?
Claire, would you be comfortable with, you know, keeping in mind exactly what you said about we have more seats than we're really opening up right now? Taking kind of that measured approach of, well, let's open it up, but maybe not open it up as fully as two per class? Which we may not even get that. But if we opened up essentially three seats in five, four seats in six, then next year we can look at how, given there's three classrooms there, maybe we can beef that up again and open up even more seats than we would, than just three.
Have we forgotten some past years where we had to come back to the table, where we didn't open up a class and we had to come back to the table and revisit?
We have to revisit this every year.
I don't mean that, Claire. I mean, when you approve seats, have you ever gotten more interest than the number of seats approved? I know that that's a tough question.
We may have, and I don't remember. I do feel like I've, I've had you adjust school choice votes since I've been here. And I'm not saying that's happened every year, but I do feel like I've had you, so, you're married, right, annually you must by law, but I do feel like I've had you adjust them at least one time.
Why aren't we addressing the upcoming third grade class? That's in a similar vote with zero choice seats and one, one application received.
Is that, is that wrong?
That's the one that's wrong, I'm sorry.
The one who's up one.
I, I apparently not really paying that much attention.
Well, we have a mistake on here. But we did not advertise. So a good question here, we did not advertise in that grade. And this is a place where I think demonstrates that it isn't just all about finances and bottom line. And I'm sure we would have gotten the applications. But the faculty felt very strongly that that is a place where the needs of the students opening up school choice didn't make sense. And we're talking early elementary. And third grade is a really critical year, all early elementary is, but now they're going into third grade. This is their first gen test, testing year. And so that was a conscious decision. So that is a very small class and it was a conscious decision to keep it that way.
Can you explain why, maybe I'm missing something. Choice seats advertised for kindergarten was four, but we received 11 and we've confirmed 11?
Because we had more space based on, so we could go over that. We had, that was so small, right? That, it was teeny tiny. And so we had some people indicate to us that they, either they were moving or there were changes. And so we, we were able to, we haven't denied anybody at kindergarten.
So do we need to adjust that though? If we only, did we approve 11 seats for that class? Sorry, I'm, I'm just confused. So if we advertised for choice seats for kindergarten?
So we can go and assess if you open the grade, but you said no. The grade wasn't open in five and six.
I got you.
So if we have space available, we have space available, I don't have to come back every single time and say, there's space available in the grade, then we can take kids in.
Well, then should we, should we open up grade three to seats? I'm, I'm just asking, I know. Then you don't have to come back.
I, so I would say to you, grade three, and I, and I do understand this, if that would be, what I told the faculty that I was bringing tonight, when I got the email yesterday from you, this is what the school committee will hear, so they know what I'm presenting to you. It's everything I presented thus far. I at no point said that I was going to recommend opening up grade three. It is ultimately your decision, next year's grade three. I would tell you, I would not advise you to do that. And again, it is teeny tiny, but in that case, it's, it is a class of early education grade that has some very significant things.
In the last six years, I've seen more problems in the second and third grade timeframe with three kids going through the system and like seeing every, every grade habits hiccups. That's a challenging year. It's a big year of transition coming from pre and K to that next step.
It's a completely different teaching range. It is a very different, early education in care is pre-K through two. So our teachers, some of them are one through six certified, but there are some that are pre-K through two certified. It is a huge transition.
And if it's going well, I'd rather not go back because I've seen some major flips in the last six years.
So my, my suggestion would be that we not mess with that.
I agree with that. I mean, the only reason I'm looking at five and six and being a little bit more stingy on it is because there's clear interest there. There's been no interest and if that, leave well enough alone there. And then if we can reevaluate it the following year, then reevaluate it the following year.
Yep.
And I'm just, I'm just, I want some, I'm asking for some clarification on what you said about the kindergarten with the four and the 11. So saying if we open the grade up to, to choice, then accept anybody that applies or?
So we're advertising this many seats. If we have, if our interest exceeds, and we don't have space, if our interest exceeds and we say, you know, we don't feel, we don't have space, then we have to do a lottery system. Once the grade is open, if we determine there actually is space in that grade, we've gotten information about either students going to charter or online school instead of remaining and having their elementary school, or they're moving out of the district. So then we start taking in more choice, but you've opened the grade. We can't take slots, we have no.
So is that 30, so is that 34 reflective of that 11? Or is it 34 plus 11?
It's reflective of that.
Oh, okay.
It's what we.
34 total.
Confirmed acceptance. It's the confirmed acceptance, 34 total. There's not another.
That's probably something else that I missed, or?
Yeah, so, no, it's confusing. It's just no.
Right, so what we're saying is that.
And I would make, I mean, we may make a decision if we had a bunch of move-outs or something strange happened, right? There was more space in grades five and six. But really, if it's anything that, there's a kind of a divided opinion about. When we state again, faculty, the faculty has a range of opinion about this. And even those that were not in favor of opening up the grades said, I understand it's not my preferred strategy, but I understand why it's a strategy. They did not say that about next year's grade four. So do we need to vote?
We do?
Yep. Motion to add three seats to the current grade five. The future grade five, yeah, future grade five and four seats to the future grade six.
Oh, I left a second.
Can I second it?
Where is school committee?
Yeah, I second it. All in favor?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Abstained? What if I agree with one and not the other? I guess I have to abstain, I, 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 I agree with adding classes, I agree with adding classes, but children numbers, I agree with adding seats, so I don't, I don't want to...
Are you suggesting you want to add more?
I agree with that in at least one, I agree with that in at least three seats to five and four to six.
So, that was the motion, right, so?
Right, yeah.
Yep?
Yeah, because I don't disagree, and I don't want seats, I guess we have to agree.
That sounds logical.
So, so all in favor? Aye.
So, three yeas, do I, three yeas?
I, I just want to get your vote, Keith, what was it?
Nine. I just, I don't, I, I feel like it's, that class has gone through so much, and it's been so hard to get them to where they are now, that I just, I really feel that opening it up to additional, additional students, additional energy, which just could seriously set them up. I said that.
I didn't hear that. So, are you abstaining, or are you?
No, I'm agreeing.
Okay. Two or three yeas, one opposed. There are objections?
Okay.
I appreciate the dialogue, because obviously I don't have a child in that grade, but I also understand the pressures on the flip side of space. Okay, um, we're going to move forward then. Uh, calendar, fiscal year nineteen calendar, including half days, end of marking period.
Oh, Pat, I'm sorry, can I do this before she leaves? This is her last, thank you, Pat, this is.
Oh, all right, thank you, Pat.
Yeah, Pat, thank you.
Good night. So, is yellow that changes as we, we voted?
Yeah, I'm so sorry, you did, it's just adding your half days.
Oh, okay.
It is adding your half days, what you didn't have before were your half days after parent conferences, you didn't have all the half days, so it's been, it's been updated to reflect the half days that come after open houses, after parent conferences.
Got it.
So, September, October. I think you already had some of your, like, your November, January, you had your end of marking period half days, you just want to have some of the ones beginning to work.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on the calendar? Okay, is there a motion to approve the calendar?
Motion to approve the twenty eighteen nineteen school year.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Business services contract, that was a handout, and so we had one response, TM, uh, TMS, or the management solution, for a total price over three fiscal years of one hundred ninety thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy-five, in FY nineteen, that'd be sixty-two thousand eight thirty, FY twenty, sixty-two thousand eight thirty, FY twenty-one, sixty-four thousand seven fifteen, they, uh, the checks indicate that they met all the criteria set forth in the request for proposals, um, so my recommendation to the committee is that you award the bid to the twelve five proposer, which is the management solutions, that would be no change in service, that is the same company we have right now.
Motion to approve the bid for TM solutions.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Do your business. All right, so now we're going to add Hopkins Academy schedule in purple.
Yes, so this is just, I gave something you can't see, but it's kind of pretty. Just, this is not a final, even now, it's not a final schedule because of imbalanced enrollments, but what, uh, Mr. Beck and I will be discussing with the faculty is, um, let's think about, are there problems here that we may need to address? What I've circled are core courses, so math, English science, required courses or history, where enrollments are twenty or greater, and you can see that the majority of the enrollments, of the higher enrollments are in math, and, um, these numbers do not reflect potential, some, some school choice students we know are interested, or indicated that they intend on coming here, the families have said that, but they haven't been scheduled to that. So, there, there is a concern that, because we've had a lot of interest in grades where we already have some pretty high enrollments in the math courses, so we've had some interest in seventh grade, you see there's one class there, that right now, in this schedule, which there'll be some refinements done to this schedule, you're looking at enrollment of twenty-four, so I don't want to see math classes at the middle school that have thirty kids in them, so this is just to let you know that this is a, I'm going to be saying to the faculty, and Mr. Beck has also noticed this, to say, I identify this as, as a problem, that I have some, I have imbalanced enrollments, um, and so, what are some strategies that we should be considering to address this? And we'll see where that conversation goes, what that means is that, don't be surprised if we're coming to you in July or August, or we need to create some course, so of course, we need to make a slight adjustment to the schedule, but I, I just want you aware that this is a conversation the faculty will be having, and I don't have a lot more to say on it, at this point, because we want to hear directly from the faculty, but I won't see you again until the end of the month, so I don't want you to know what we would be talking about, and where the schedule stands now. But you see, in some cases, we've even, there've been some minor revisions that were done recently to try to balance this more, so there could be some movement in student schedules, that's why in some cases, we don't see numbers next to course, and they have been added or moved, and I just want to put that on your radar.
If we have students coming in through school choice, these numbers would swell further?
Not all school choice students, I mean, we're pretty, we know that many of them are coming, we just haven't stepped. So, just wanted to know.
Do you need an action on that?
No.
All right, thank you. Personal report.
Oh goodness, I think we're, uh, just your long-term steps, that's all we have, and who's on leave, so not a whole lot to report yet.
Okay, public comment? Correct, correct. All right, we're all locked by now. Business manager report we did, school committee reports, family and community engagement survey. Erin, Keith?
Did you guys get a little over, and I think what we're looking for is if there's any concerns or feedback on what we did, we did make some changes, and how, you can speak to the flow of how it'll kind of show up for parents.
Yeah, so, we did, we, we did implement some changes, um, we, uh, omitted any gender specific language from the questions, um, and then we added in, um, a section that would be, um, that would be optional based on the response to a question of if your child accepted, was in any special ed programs, um, and so that would be if you, similar to how, if you, uh, that's actually another different, another change we made, um, where if, just like if you say no to, what's your child enrolled in how the elementary, it'll jump to the Hopkins, it's the same thing, the functionality with the special education services. The way that the Survey Monkey was, um, set up before, it was just a functionality of having a checkbox versus a radio dial, so you could actually hit both yes and no to a lot of those questions, and then you have to scroll through everything now, you just have to go. And, uh, so, and then we changed, just changed some, changed some of the language from before just to make it a little bit tighter, um, a little, um, just to write tightly and to just keep a similar voice, because it seemed like a lot of, it seemed like the questions were just read, uh, read differently, um, for a lot of the previous one, kept the vast majority of all of the, we kept the vast majority of all the questions, I think we only changed out one or two of them from what they were before.
And then moved on.
And then moved on.
To have a special education section. And then we did include, we got feedback from the CPAC, the Special Education Program of Elementary, and so we, um, based on their feedback of the questions, Keith and I sat down and tried to word questions to include, um, essentially all the concerns that they wanted us to, and I forget how many questions we had, like seven, for the special education section, to try to condense it, but get to all of their questions and concerns in there, so we were able to accommodate them as well.
Yeah, they met, they, they came to us with, I believe, something like twelve or fourteen questions, and we were able to get them down to this one.
I only had one suggestion, um, and, on question seven, which of the following tools do you find to be the most effective way to receive information? I would add the superintendent email, or Annie's email for that.
So, I had emailed out Annie to, to ask, because I don't think we use Chalk Talk anymore.
I don't think we do.
Yeah, so, I was going to suggest, and I, we didn't, we figured rather than making all these adjustments ahead of time and have to adjust it again, because I'm not going to lie, Keith is doing it in Survey Monkey, so, to cut back on him, we figured we'd wait for any other feedback, so, um, that was my thought as well, was adding in her email, and, yeah, it's Keith, taking out Chalk Talk, because we don't use it.
That is something that can be easily admitted.
Yeah. So, is, is Chalk Talk definitely not something that?
I haven't gotten any of Chalk Talks.
Because I haven't been asked to contribute to it, and that could just really be something that I need to be working on.
Well, no, we're not getting them in the elementary school, and there is an other button that you can add it to if we're missing something, too.
And we, that's another, that is one of the questions that we rephrased, um, because originally it was like, which of these are you aware of, but we want to figure, we want to get a little bit deeper into, uh, into effectiveness, effectiveness.
Got it. That's great, and just to note that that question would be changed into a different basis.
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
Um, the only comment I had was, I found it helpful to, um, to do a test, to ask a volunteer to go through the entire survey and just time themselves, because we, we set five to ten minutes, and it invariably took more, and in fact, maybe some of the data on the backend will tell you exactly how much time it took, and if we're only, if we're mostly adding questions, then it's only going to get longer, so.
So, I think that's why we, sorry.
But just, uh, testing, timing, uh, and maybe considering just taking another line to it.
We, I think that was part of the reason that we wanted to try to make it a little bit more concise, um, and fewest words possible in the question, so that it was quick and easy to understand what was being asked of them, um, and then, um, I think also what's helpful is, um, there's a general consensus that parents in special education are willing to spend more time on things, I'm not going to speak for general education, but I, I know that it's a general rule, parents in special education are willing to spend more time, so I think it'll cut back the survey for somebody who's not clicking on special education, that'll make it a little bit quicker to begin with, because we're not, it's not going to be an NA, it's not going to be not applicable, it's going to be, you're not even going to see something that doesn't contain to you at all, so that should hopefully, hopefully.
Good. And the timing for this will be what?
That was going to be my next question, um, so, obviously June double X is not a date, um, so, when do we want to, when do, when do we want to have this ready by, I'm assuming this is something that's going to go out in an email from Annie?
Yeah, do a separate email for it.
I can have these edits done tonight, if we're comfortable with everything other than that, um, maybe not tonight, since we have to get some big, just try out the test timing. So, it's definitely something that could be sent out, today's Wednesday, and you wouldn't want to send it out on Friday, so, it could be ready to send out this coming Monday, um, and then have it open, um, for, what do we think, only two weeks, or?
Open at Monday, the eleventh, maybe, yeah, if you closed it the twenty-second.
Is that roughly our school committee meeting?
Our school committee meeting is the twenty-fifth, the following month.
So, yeah, if you close it by the twenty-second, and then you can have, you can tell us how many, what are response rates look like.
Do, I have a question, do we, um, because I actually, I, I want to, I, I want to open it as quick as possible, too, to get it before the summer, because I'm worried that over the summertime, people may check their email last, i- is there a general concern that there's, um, too many emails coming out at the end of the year, like, do we have any concerns that'll get overloaded?
I don't think so.
I think people are paying attention to the time they're actually.
Okay, good.
With stuff going on, going up here, making sure they know when the last day of school ends, all of those things.
And think about, and also think about what you want in the subject line, so I'll send a separate email with this link, I'm not sure if this is a problem, could be a problem or not, I wouldn't particularly worry about it, so, you choose the subject line, I'll send it, you can tell me everything you want, and I will send out reminders to people, so it won't be in the weekly email, I will also put it in the weekly email, and I'll also indicate to people that it'll be a standing link of a website, so what does that mean? I think that means that somebody could try to fill out the survey five or six times, I, I hope that person doesn't exist, but, you know, if they do, I, I think, I would worry about it, but that's technically what could happen, is somebody could say, wow, I'm never going to throw those results.
That would, that would.
If somebody feels that strongly, you could take it.
Yeah, if you're that, but you wanted to do the survey twelve times.
So, I think we could circulate the link in other places, like the, um, friends and campus.
Everywhere you can.
And reduce it.
Yeah, like, even like Facebook.
On the Facebook page. Would you be willing to kind of like, pre-advertise it in your, in your file?
That's a great idea.
And I will, open it up on Monday, I'll commit to having these changes, and have somebody else go through it, and work with you on the language for the email.
Because the hardest thing to do is decide to kill a question, but I would urge you to kill as many questions as you possibly can. But I do like the branching that you did to the special ed.
Definitely.
Questions, because that, that does help streamline it for, um, you know, general ed parents that are not seeing necessarily those, that set of questions. Great job.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, um, policy committee, we're meeting in September?
You'll meet at some point over the summer, but I can't even bring myself to think about that right now, and I know I just, I just depressed you by saying that, you will meet over the summer, and so you received all the policy documents separately, so you had the summary sheet, you received the track changes, and I realized I hadn't given those to you in enough time to read through all of them, so you'll vote then, that'll be the second final reading from a conversation we started back in March, at your gym.
Okay. Finance tri-board, I have no updates.
They had a good time.
Yeah. They're meeting now, they're done, um, I haven't gone recently, and I don't think I've gone since we met last, so, okay. Fields, can we talk about that? Collaborative.
So, the collaborative met on May thirtieth, and I was not able to attend that meeting, but I circulated by email a report from the executive director, feel free to check that out, they continue to have many great accomplishments and are involved in graduation from students that are applying to their programs in their school, um, and we just completed the, um, review of the executive director, which is an annual requirement, so that...
the executive director, which is an annual requirement, so that is taking place concurrently, so all in all, things are good, and feel free to check out that report.
Great, thanks for sending that. Okay, let's see here. When I opened up your collaborative report, it closed my agenda. Oh, sorry.
There were action items, the approval of the conference.
Okay, approval. Thank you. AP warrants submitted in April, this one I, it's named, yeah.
Yes, you do.
If somebody would like to motion in second and wrote AP warrants.
I move that we approve the AP warrants submitted in April 2018.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? Okay, approval of warrants, I have it back, sorry, approval of warrants submitted in April 2018, so these will be payroll, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve warrants submitted in April 2018.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Approval of April 9th, 2018, minutes, any questions on those or revisions? Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve the April 9th, 2018, minutes.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye. We already did the budget, we did the school choice slots, we did the calendar, and we awarded the business services contract. All right.
Our next meeting is June 25th, I would like to add as an agenda item on there, the schedule for the Curious Retreats, and thinking about the agenda around that, we just, we've talked about it quite a bit, and I know we've probably piled a lot on that meeting, and it's a full day, but.
So 25, June 25?
Monday, the 25th, yes.
I will be out of town.
Okay, that's true. Are you guys here? You're available?
I am as well. Until eight, because my friend is running an ninja warrior.
Oh, you're kidding, that's awesome.
But obviously we're taking it.
Let's not meet past eight. So let's make sure Paul's available, get two.
And if you want to just float by me some options for dates, I'm happy to, to be available to for the retreat.
Perfect.
So we're looking the location for that, we are looking to our friends at the collaborative bar to assist you. Deal, so we can feel like we're getting away at no cost, so that it's not too exciting for you, since you go there about six times a year, if you may, but I can also ask five colleges or a few spaces that are available to you, I was just trying to find a space that was big enough for us, that was not at Bainbridge or Hopkins Academy, certainly they're willing to help us out. And I'm open to any other suggestions, but I was just trying to make it so we weren't spending any money.
I'm sure I could get us into the Fisher Wildlife Office, but I don't want to.
So I have an office at the Amherst Works Building, and there's a vault, so it's a redone bank, and one of the conference rooms is a vault, so it could be there if you wanted to, that's an option.
All right. Would they charge you for that, or you, because you already have a station?
And I travel enough that they give money.
They get that money's worth, because you're not there. Nice, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, great, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Oh, you need to do that, don't you, to motion to, to join the meeting?
Motion to close the meeting?
Close the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.